Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Would you like to call the roll?
Is there an adjournment?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay.
Yeah, we went. Yeah, while you were in the bathroom.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Frederick?
Here.
Ms. Ragum?
Here.
Mayor Snigley?
I'm here. Okay. Would you like to join us? We're going to do a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is as follows. The United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Need corrections, changes? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much. We will move to public participation and I have a, I will start us off with a proclamation. Whereas, the city of Oxford recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout the local Oxford community. And whereas geographic information systems, or GIS, allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond. And whereas, the city of Oxford acknowledge, acknowledges those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline, and thus contributing toward the advancement of operational efficiencies and expanding access to spatial information. And whereas, the city of Oxford is committed to utilizing GIS information to inform decision-making and better serve its residents by making useful geographic information open and easily available to the public. And whereas, GIS activities can bring attention to important environmental, social, and physical attributes, and having a robust resource of GIS data and associated infrastructure can help contribute toward making our community a safer, healthier, and more equitable place to live, work, and play. And whereas, there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential. And whereas, the city of Oxford looks forward to continued town and gown partnerships as well as potential for other educational collaborations to give students real-world, hands-on experience addressing issues with geographic relevance in our community. Now therefore, I will be Snigley Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, hereby proclaim Wednesday, November fifteenth, 2023, as GIS Day in the city of Oxford, and urge all citizens to support this most worthwhile effort to raise awareness about the benefits and uses of geographic information systems. Zach, you want to say anything?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you Mayor Snigley, members of council, and good evening to the rest of the public and the audience tonight. My name is Zachary Moore, and it is a great honor to serve in a variety of capacities for the City of Oxford organization. One of those, of course, being geographic information systems, or GIS. I'm happy to wear my two main hats for Oxford as both city planner and as GIS coordinator. GIS is many things. It is a program, a system, a science, and ultimately a way of thinking about and analyzing the dynamic world that we all live in. To the late person, it essentially boils down to this: a love of maps and of making maps. To me, urban planning and GIS are inseparable from one another, though of course, it is quite true that planning reaches far more broadly than just GIS, and the applications of GIS extend far beyond city and regional planning. In our increasingly digital world, the use of GIS is becoming more and more vital to better understanding trends, patterns, and data in order to solve problems and inform decision-making. I am thankful to work with many other dedicated staff here at the city of Oxford who share an appreciation for and possess skills in GIS. There are many recent successes to highlight, such as our interactive property and zoning viewers, which you can see on cityofoxford.org backslash GIS, our permit and rental dashboards, as well as a comprehensive LED service line inventory, which our service department has done a phenomenal job assembling and updating. One last notable accomplishment I want to draw attention to are recently revamped Oxford area trail kiosks. The new prints on these kiosks showcase both city and Miami trail information on a new citywide reference map with both repeat and first-time visitors in mind. This would not have been possible without collaboration from Miami University Natural Areas, as well as Miami's GIS coordinator, Robin Abbott, whom I'm happy to have join me here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Robin now to talk a little bit more about our ongoing town and gown partnership focused around GIS.
All right, thanks Zach. My name's Robin Abbott. I'm the GIS coordinator of just down the street of Miami University, and I have been here for almost twenty years. And in the full twenty years that I have been here, I have always had a relationship with the city of Oxford. So I have a list of people that I'd like to thank from the time that I got here, from Doug Elliott, Andrew Wilson, Chief Jones, Sam Perry, Jessica Green, Zach Moore, and anyone else who has come alongside my classes simply because of an ask. Zach indicated it is so important for our students to have real-world practice when they're under the wings of Miami and we kind of have them captured there. And having the city of Oxford so close and so willing to help out has meant that just for my classes in less than twenty years, I've had over seventy students who have worked in my classroom with the city of Oxford. They have mapped sidewalks, they have confirmed addresses uptown. They have been mapping right now, we're mapping Oxford Cemetery, which as you know, recently became acquired by the city. So we're working on that project. We have also looked at development trends over time, looked at ER runs, and looked at which communities are being serviced, when from those. So really, really, what I want to highlight is that we couldn't do the good work that we're doing and send out students who are phenomenal on the other side when they leave Miami without collaboration with people like you in the city of Oxford. So deep thank you for always being willing to say yes whenever we come knocking on the door to say, is it okay if our students come alongside you and investigate some projects with you? So Mayor Snigley, thank you very much for the proclamation. It's wonderful.
We depend on you.
Can I say, Robin was my blazer for my certificate, and all my work since then has involved her as through my master and my PhD.
Student, I was going to say, I told my students if anyone came, I would ask them to stand if I know one this year. He was like, nope, sorry. All right, well, there's over seventy of them out there, and there's at least twenty-five on campus right now, so.
So in that could feel like, because it's funny, this side of the, you know, Jason and I consider honorary geographers as a prior geographer. But yeah, that, in a world in which people don't always know what geography is and students know what it is, this is proof positive of how essential geography is to important things like local government. And it's proved positive, if you look across all of the ways that we've been privileged in geography to collaborate with the city of Oxford in planning and GIS and all kinds of other stuff. Yeah, it's awesome that we got this collaboration. So thank you to people who work together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we had a short glitch, if some of you were watching, but the system has rebooted. That's what we were trying to solve up here, and I think it is now working again. Now we will move to public comments. And anyone wishing to address council about items that are not on the agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, you can come forward at this time. Give us your name and where you live for the record, and we'll give you up to five minutes.
I'll come during the glitch since I hate public speaking and that just, that many less people listening. So my name is Kathy Titus, and I live at 101 Charleston Drive in Oxford. I live in a condo that backs up to the, to the city's newly acquired Chestnut Street properties. My neighbors are mostly seniors, singles, and single, mature adult women. My neighborhood on my street is actually four condo buildings with four different condo HOAs. They're owned, one building is owned by eight condo units, one is built, is owned by seven residents. One building is owned by six and one is owned by five. My building is owned by six, so I have five family members with twenty-four units in total. My concern here tonight, the reason I came, at Mr. Ellerby's urging to, if I wanted information, he asks us to come to city council meeting and obtain information. So currently, I live on a quiet, safe, in a quiet, safe neighborhood. My concern is that will change, and my second concern is that the value of my property will fall. So I'm here for information because I believe that the lack of information and the lack of transparency can cause conjecture, as Mr. Ellerby stated, based on assumptions or misinformation leading to fear of, and what ifs. So where did I get my information? So I've spoken with Mr. Perry, the Director of Community Development for the city, on the phone and also via email. I still have many unanswered questions. So this is the information that I've ascertained through my conversations with Mr. Perry, and please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. So what I understand is, is that the city is currently pursuing rezoning of the three lots that they purchased on Chestnut Street. The rezoning of the Chestnut three single-family lots will allow for over thirty affordable housing units. I asked that since thirty houses cannot be built on that amount of space, would the development be apartments? I was told that the city was looking to partner with the developer to help plan the housing, but probably apartments. I asked if the development would be Section Eight housing, like Parkview Arms. Mr. Perry was emphatic that this develop would never, development would never be like Parkview Arms as it would have better management. And Mr. Perry also stated that Parkview Arms, at this point, barely passes its HUD inspections. I asked if the city would own and manage the apartment, and again, they would partner with the developer. I asked Mr. Perry, who would make this development affordable? What would make it affordable housing? Where would the funding come from? And he stated that the rents would be government-assisted. So I asked, I stated actually, so this is Section Eight housing? And there was no comment to that. I checked with HUD in Hamilton, Ohio, to see in what ways could the government provide housing assistance funds? I was told it was through Section Eight. I totally, I totally agree, I agree that Oxford needs affordable housing in all income sectors. My husband and I have been looking for a house for two and a half years. So I understand the frustration there. Those that live in the lower-income levels are the most vulnerable in this population than any population. Therefore, they are in the greatest need. I totally agree with that. This part of Chestnut Street is a great place to live. Kroger's is nearby, Talawanda Middle School, and Kramer Elementary are walkable. The university is also close by for jobs. I read an article about how Section Eight housing can be beneficial to a community if well-designed, quality housing is built and there is an excellent level of management. PVA is a negative picture of what can happen to a housing development that is poorly managed and poorly maintained. For Mr. Perry's emphasis, this is not going to be like, like a PVA, like our current, what we know about PVA. What I know about government-assisted housing, several years ago, I spent over a year meeting with and building relationships, relationships with the residents at PBAs on a biweekly basis. I babysat their children. I visited sick children in ICU. I looked forward to weekly lunch dated department of a woman who became a good friend of mine. However, I only visited during the daylight hours due to the high rate of criminal activity. I am, I have one minute left, thirty seconds left.
You don't, you don't really.
Okay, can I continue this?
You know what? You can't. And I say that because I try to be fair to everybody.
Okay.
And so whether somebody agrees with me or doesn't, is not the point.
Thank you for listening.
I try to be fair.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I think we got your points.
Can you read the rest of this for me? I am right here.
Okay, does anyone else like to address council?
Harry Titus. So as my wife indicated, I ask you, Oxford City Council member and Community Development Director, what plans are you putting in place to prevent the Chestnut Street development from becoming a negative picture of government-assisted housing? Will you promise and commit to building quality-designed housing that far exceeds HUD requirement? Will you promise and commit to an excellent level of management? I hope so, especially for the sake of residents that will live in this development and the residents of the neighboring properties, because we would be the ones most affected. If you don't commit to excellence in the planning, design, building, and management of Chestnut Street property, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to speak on my own and stuff. Harry Titus, also at 101 Charleston Drive. We have twenty-six units, as my wife mentioned, in our development. Twenty-one of those units are all two-story designs, eight hundred square foot, two bedrooms, one and a half bath. Excellent designs on the, and that's above ground. With those twenty-one units, for the last three years that I've lived there, I'm one of the shortest time residents there at the condos and stuff, I've never heard the word, word afraid mentioned in any conversation. And it wasn't until the last two and a half months that that word has been prevalent in the conversation. So there are, there are, the greatest demographic in our neighborhood is elderly, single, women. And that word is now starting to pop up. Again, design and management are key to a good development. And our residents would definitely love to participate in the future with the proceedings that the city's got going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council? Looks like we got a line.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of city staff. My name is Stan Bailey, and I live at 192 Stone Creek Drive. We're on a bit of a theme here, it seems, because we're talking about, I will be talking about either housing or lack of housing. Currently, I am leader of the Eradicating Systemic Poverty Team of the Oxford Presbyterian Church here in town, and am one of four facilitators of the Oxford Area Solutions for Housing, also known as OSH. At our October twenty-third OSH meeting, the facilitators presented to and read a petition that was signed by those present. This petition, as many of you know, was sent to the mayor, members of council, and several members of city staff. For the public and the record, and in case there are any questions or comments to be addressed to me, I will now read that petition. It's fairly short. Oxford Area Solutions for Housing strongly recommends that the city of Oxford immediately allocate money for a cold shelter and staffing of it for Oxford during the current winter months, December one, 2023, and continue through March thirty-one, 2024. We recall that nearly a year ago, Oxford was faced with the same situation. No shelter and no clear plan for one. We ask that it be given the attention to homeless and all those suffering from lack of warm shelter deserved. In addition, we suggest that at least fifty thousand dollars of the city's budget be set aside for this purpose for the current winter season, and that allocation of funding for a cold shelter and staffing of it be a standing item in the general budget of the city every year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any comments?
We don't do comments.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
How much time do I have? I have one more thing real quick.
Yeah, you've got more time.
Okay, okay.
But you're still on the clock.
I know, I thought I was counting. I was timing this pretty carefully. I just wanted to say in addition, I and others in OSH and in the community, really, you meet people and talk at Kroger's, want to applaud the city's efforts to find and purchase land that the city will now own, or does own, on which affordable housing will eventually be built. This is important and valuable work and a mark of progress on behalf of those people who now may work here but cannot afford to live here. At the same time, we cannot forget the poorest of the poor, those who are unhoused, now living in tents or cars. As a longtime advocate for the poor, I can say it is difficult, if not impossible, to escape poverty if one does not have, even temporarily, a secure and safe shelter, a place to renew and survive in order to perform in the schoolroom and workplace and as a normal citizen. Thank you.
Okay, could everyone please silence your telephones? Thank you, appreciate it. Yes, sir, you're next. Welcome.
Hello. Ladies and gentlemen, I live in, my name is David Smith.
Hi, David.
I live in nine-ten Maryland Drive, which my backyard will abut this new development. My only questions, I only have two questions. One, this, the city already owns forty-three acres out on seven thirty-two. It's only another half-mile distance, but why not use that land and keep the residential part of Oxford where I live in behind residential? The second is, if all our pleading and whatever is not heard, is there going to be adequate buffering between the residential and this new apartment complex? I look forward to seeing the design, because I, I will understand the design. I am a licensed land surveyor, and Mr. Perry and Mike both know me. So I ask that those questions be answered in the future meetings.
Thank you very much. Thank you, we appreciate you coming. While Peggy's coming up, I will note that any development goes through a public procedure and goes through planning and council. So there will be a lot of discussion.
I'm Peggy Bradstrater, I live at eighteen O Circle. Back to talk about my favorite topics, solar panels. But actually, it relates very much to the preceding comments because one of the things I've said to you before, and I want to reiterate it, affordable housing means affordable utilities. And I thought I'd do a little research. Been reading this book about the new energy transition and how to keep low-income people as part of it rather than as recipients of the pollution as happened in the last energy revolution. So the author contends that affordable utilities is about six percent of income. So I looked up some figures. In Ohio, the poverty level is about thirty thousand dollars a year, which comes out to about twenty-five hundred dollars a month. And six percent of that would be a hundred and fifty dollars a month. It would need to include heat, lights, hot water, water, sewage, trash. Sounds like a pretty small number. I would think that for most housing, that would be higher than that. But the, the, poverty level in Ohio does not take into account things like minimum wage. The minimum wage worker, full-time minimum-made worker, makes about twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars in Ohio. And if you break that down, that would mean that their utility bill oughtn't to be any higher than a hundred and ten dollars a month. So I don't think some of this affordable housing discussion, if it doesn't take that into account, is going to not be as successful as we'd like it to be. So I'd like to have you consider that all of your RFPs for affordable housing includes solar, heat pumps, the kinds of insulation, the kinds of things that we know how to do. It has to be done upfront. If it doesn't get done upfront, it's not going to get done. You could say, yeah, we're going to make it suitable so that somebody could add solar panels. That'll never happen. It has to be an RFP. We have to do this upfront if we're serious about making this housing affordable for everybody.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time coming to council. Is there anyone else who'd like to address us?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you all for coming, and thank you to all of those who spoke before us. I know it can be a little nervous, but we try to make it as pleasant as possible. We'll move now to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much. And we'll move then to resolutions, of which there are many, and you can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with advanced radio technology for the purchase of forty-five Kenwood radios and associated accessories as set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto at state contract pricing at a cost not to exceed one hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. And Chief?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. For you tonight is a request to purchase new portable radios for the fire department. We're still using the radios that were bought with the county money when they originally started the radio system many years ago.
Let me interrupt you. If you're going to have a conversation, can you have it outside? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, now continuing.
So we're due to replace these radios. They've met the end of their useful life, and what we have for you is, I think, the best deal we could find on them, and we're ready, ready to finally do this.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this item? Okay, councilors, any comments or questions? We want the fire department to communicate.
Yes, we do, that's important.
All right, ready to vote? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Go get those radios.
Thank you.
You may read the second.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Cincinnati Office of the FBI to allow their EMS personnel to volunteer with the Oxford Division of Fire and EMS, provide care to patients, and maintain their skills pursuant to the agreement.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. John, anything you want to say about this that is not in the title?
Uh, not much. Just that we were approached by a former employee in the fire department who now works for the FBI, wants to be able to keep his skills sharp, and they're offering to let him do that here, and they're not interested in letting it.
Yeah. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you. Counselors, any questions for coming up? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution's adopted, thank you very much. Thank you. You may read the third.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a forty thousand dollar grant application to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for the community recycling education program with a required match up to ten thousand dollars.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica's?
Good evening, councilors. This is a grant that Green and Murphy have been working on, and it is with the Ohio EPA. We intend to apply for a forty thousand dollar grant and up to a ten thousand dollar match for a total of fifty thousand dollars that will go toward an education program for both our recycling and composting in our community. That will be done through print media, video media, things that can be viewed year after year. And then the second part will be at specialty events, doing portable waste stations for volunteers to help residents and attendees to understand how to sort their trash, recycle compost, and landfill waste. So that's what we intend to use the grant for, and we'd like to look forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Counselors? Yeah?
So, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. Hey, you gotta jump right up.
I just want to say, as someone who has been part of the trash police at uptown events in the rain, one of the items of this grant we hope to get is a tat.
Thank you. Now.
So a couple different questions. First, congratulations, or, you know, on getting to this stage. I just had a couple of questions, because I get these grants too and I just didn't know what it could cover. One, it looks like it could cover some physical things, like we're talking about potentially the buckets to do the composting. So an idea that I have, and this is from my own experience, when I was in Tucson doing graduate school more than twenty years ago, there was a program similar to this and they had basically giveaway of at-home composters. You know, like it was just a shell. You can't compost your meat and stuff, but in your backyard, it was just a simple backyard composter. And the reality is, twenty-plus years later, I still compost in it. Is that something that the Ohio EPA grant could potentially, to supplement our, you know, our meat composting? The backyard composting is just, it's just a question whether something like that could be.
I do believe Rena was looking at providing composting buckets for our food composting program to go to the go-zero. I do not believe we've looked at the backyard composting.
Can I make a comment about why the commercial composting is so beautiful? It's more than just meat, it's moving away from plastic. So we have our like corn-based plastic that you can use at our door then. So that's the beauty about making sure that we're bolstering that as much as possible.
Well, I'm not wanting to take away from that. I just, it's a supplementary thing, like I think as a backyard composter, it's just, it's right in your backyard. So, and I'm not saying that this should be adjusted to this, but I just want to put that in because I think that could be a good part of our system in the future, if though Ohio EPA grants can cover.
I will see if there's room in the budget.
And the second thing is, is I'm super happy to see us move towards really getting kind of committed to being zero-waste in our events. And I guess I would like for staff at a certain point come up with like, I mean, I would like to codify some of that in policy, whether it's our own commitment for our own events to be zero-waste. But for example, if they're community, like ideally, I think, use of the public parks in the future would be, there'd be a commitment to go in zero-waste for all public events and public parks. So that just, in the future, I would love for us to figure out what kind of, you know, what that might be. So, but anyway, thanks to you and Rena for doing this.
Since we're making comments that are not directed to your particular resolution, I also think that at these major events like Oktoberfest, we need to better communicate to people that the cubs are compostable. Because a lot of people didn't know that until they walked up and the vice mayor was there to explain to them what it was. But there wasn't signage sufficient to let people know that. So we've got to do a better job. Thank you.
Wait, thank, kind of related to this, I love the idea of using part of this grant to do a lot of what we're talking about, the feather flags that would show, hey, you can compost or recycle here. I wanted to just maybe take a second to tie it to the letter that we got from the Chamber of Commerce. And maybe we could do a little bit of thinking around we waive those fees that they've requested we waive. Maybe this be part of that in a, you know, as sponsors, we would also ask that you really highlight the sustainability and the compostability at the event.
That's something staff, I think that's wise.
And Rena has been all over all these things. I feel like she's, her mind is going super fast. But as far as the rest of the trash crew, I wanted to also point out, besides Peggy, who's done a ton, John as well, has done a ton volunteering, trying to educate people. And there have been a lot of hot and rainy days. So I really appreciate all your work that you put into it.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Okay, are you ready to vote? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Resolution is adopted, you can read number four.
A resolution authorizing the use of thirty thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds to create a forgivable loan program for new daycare businesses within the city of Oxford.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hi, Jessica.
Hello again. This is a council goal that is both in our comprehensive plan and then was established by council for our twenty-twenty-three, yeah, action item. And so we have spent most of the year kind of looking at how to establish this program and how to encourage more daycares to start up. And so what we've come up with is to use thirty thousand dollars of our American Rescue Plan funds to set up a forgivable loan program. The way this would work is for anyone who wants to start a new childcare business in the city of Oxford, they would have to be licensed by Ohio Job and Family Services and accept daycare vouchers through them. And they could apply for a loan up to five thousand dollars for really anything they needed to start their childcare business. That could be safety equipment, it could be playground equipment or educational materials, et cetera and so on. Then they would enter into a loan agreement with the city. And the loan terms would be a sixty-month lending period with a three percent payment, excuse me, three percent interest repayment. And, but once that new daycare provider is in business and operational for a year, we would waive the loan repayment. So it would become a forgivable loan in exchange for them opening a new daycare business in our community. So that's our proposal and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Thank you, councilors.
I think this is fantastic. I'm definitely in support of this. Childcare is so needed and so expensive these days, especially with our school situation and transportation, everything else is even that much more important. But I wanted to add something slightly in addition to this. Would we have sufficient urban funds left over to also possibly address the cold shelter homeless? And I'm not competing against each other.
If I could speak to that at the end of the meeting, yep, that would be maybe helpful.
And just to clarify, this would also be tied in with accepting vouchers, right?
Yes, they have to be certified by Ohio Job and Family Services and accept Job and Family Services vouchers in order to be eligible to apply for this program. And I should clarify, it's going to be managed by the Community Improvement Corporation Revolving Loan Fund Committee. And if someone for some reason gets the loan and then doesn't open a daycare, they just have to continue to repay it with that interest.
Okay, thank you very much.
So because of revolving loan fund, you know, we have these funds, but I don't, like the revolving loan fund isn't always optimized like it could be because people either don't know it's there or they don't know, you know. And I don't know that we're in the business of trying to do economic development, get people going into the daycare business. But how can we communicate to this, to a great degree possible so people know this money is there and we can help them use it? Because that, it's the money being there and then it's to actually.
I mean, I do believe our next step, once you approve this, is an education campaign to our community about like, hey, this loan is available, we're encouraging daycare startups. And we would do a, you know, promotional campaign around that. And then I believe we would, we were leaning toward doing an application period, trying to get applications in at a certain time period. But we could do it, we'd encompass these funds by twenty-twenty-four. So, you know, we could do a period of time where we accept these loan applications.
I just want to thank you for being responsive. I know Councilor Agrew had raised this, it was a while ago and then it was raised again at our annual retreat. And so sometimes we don't hear about things, but we trust that you're working on them and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Awesome. Let's do number five.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for the installation of interview room cameras and network hardware for police, the police division's interview rooms at year one cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Before you is a resolution to allow the city manager to enter into a five-year agreement with Axon Enterprises for interview room technology. This was part of our two thousand twenty-three capital improvement budget plan. These cameras, unfortunately, are something that we have found we do need. As you see in my staff report, there's a few crimes, rape homicide, serious crimes that we do have to video and audio record as part of the Ohio Revised Code. What we've found with our current system, we've tried to piggyback off of our current surveillance system in the police department. Unfortunately, the system doesn't retain as long as we need it to. And it's very difficult for us to get those very, very large files down to prosecutor's office for case work. So before we use a plan to integrate our interview rooms with our bodyboard camera system, where we stay housed, stored on the same cloud system that our body cameras are, we'll have a lot more control over retention that way, be able to track our videos with officer audits and things, a whole lot better than what we can do now.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this resolution? Councilors? Sounds like a good deal to me. All right. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Resolution is adopted, thank you, appreciate it. And the last one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Chapman Ford for the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Ford interceptor utility vehicles with specified manufacturer installed options at state contract pricing at a cost not to exceed eighty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt? It's been moved and seconded.
Once again, good evening. I feel like this has been the year of cars with council. So what you have in front of you is a resolution for us to move forward with next year's purchase this year. And the city manager's proposed budget for two thousand twenty-four, it's recommended that the police division purchase two new vehicles to support our operations. We were notified a very, very short time ago that if we want to put a purchase in for next year, we need to beat the November deadline, which put us kind of on a time crunch. So we were able to get these under state contract pricing. You'll see that the price is less than the forty-nine thousand five hundred we paid this year for cars off the lot. And these come with the specs that we have requested. I will note that we did ask for a hybrid price. We had an original price that was a little bit higher for hybrid vehicles. And in talking with the dealership, they suggested we do not go that route yet, especially with the current market in the vehicle manufacturing world. We would not have a high success rate of obtaining those next year. So they felt comfortable that if we were able to get a purchase order this year, the cars next year would come in as well. So this will just allow us to get them a purchase order this year. We would not pay for those until next year when they come in sometime in the spring or summer.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Councilors? We talked about this at budget, so I'm surprised. Ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Resolution adopted, good luck, get them this time. And we'll move to ordinances, first reading. When there is a first reading, we do not have a motion and second just for the public's information. And we will discuss it and then it will be brought up at a second meeting for a vote. You can read the first one.
An ordinance by Oxford City Council amending Chapter one eighty-two, income tax effective January one, two thousand sixteen, of the codified ordinances of the city of Oxford, Ohio.
Okay, Doug, you're going to take us through this?
Yes. So the, these new microphones are pretty neat, huh? So the state of Ohio recently adopted House Bill thirty-three, the operating appropriations for fiscal years two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, which made several changes to the sections of the Ohio Revised Code involving municipal taxation. The city of Oxford utilizes RITA, Regional Income Tax Agency, to collect and process the city's municipal income tax. As you know, RITA has recommended changes to Chapter one eighty-two of the city of Oxford's codified ordinances relating to income taxes effective January first, two thousand sixteen, to be consistent with the changes in the Ohio Revised Code. So the law director and I recommend that council accepts RITA's recommendations to amend Chapter one eighty-two, income tax effective January first, two thousand sixteen, of the codified ordinances of the city of Oxford, Ohio, to meet the requirements of House Bill thirty-three, the operating appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. These amendments will be effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. Probably the most prominent change is that the exemption for minors' income. If you're under eighteen years of age, you will not pay municipal income tax.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, councilors, have questions?
So it does seem a significant thing in here is also, maybe it's just codified laws already, but the idea of that your tax, your income tax, where you work. And so there's a lot in here about remote work, if there are not, you know, which is, we're out of COVID, but that, you know, it seemed like Section G, a lot of that was about the idea that if you're working remotely, you're taxed remotely. In a town like Oxford that's so dependent on the income tax, you know, it's just something that, luckily, we've come through COVID, but these kind of changes can have a lot of impact for us. If Miami, for example, employs someone, unless I'm understanding that wrong.
Well, there was an exemption when you were, when we were during COVID, I forget the period of time, but you had to pay the income tax even if you were working from home. That exemption is gone now. If you're working from home, you don't pay the income tax. Now, there was a provision in there for net profits, a portion of, apportionment for remote employees, but that had to do with the company, their apportionment of that. So, but to answer your question, that provision has expired. So if you're working from home, you don't owe us any income tax if you're outside the city.
So I'm just saying that as a, as a, as a long company town, you know, that we are really dependent on particularly employees at Miami University. And we hope, I'm happy Miami has pulled people back and is not doing a lot of remote work. But those kind of employment changes at Miami could have significant, significance for us. So anyway, I just want to note that before, I just also want to welcome, these are my students out here, they often attend a public meeting. They waited until November, so they got a really good, long meeting.
But I never wait till November.
So we have to do this one way or the other, but, you know, we'll just have to hope Miami keeps its employees working, you know.
For sure. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, we'll move to the second.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign an amendment to the ground lease between the city of Oxford, Ohio and the Center for Community Revitalization of approximately two-point-one acres of city-owned land located at fifty-two thirty-four Hester Road for the Oxford Cottage Community Project.
Yes, so the city of Oxford signed a ground lease with the Center for Community Revitalization on January tenth, two thousand twenty-two for approximately two-point-one acres of city-owned land located at fifty-two thirty-four Hester Road for the Oxford Cottage Community Project. The CCR has requested a place leaned on the improvements to be constructed. This excludes the land to facilitate the financing of this project. CCR is also requesting to extend the date for completion of improvements from December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The ground lease states that any amendments must be in writing and approved by both parties. The project courses for a pocket community of twelve residential cottage units of three hundred ninety-six square feet each and managed by the community manager as a representative of CCR. So the project is moving forward a little longer than we expected it to take, but sometimes good things take a little longer.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Thank you. Councilors, any comments? So this is something that's been in our hopper for a long time and it's good to see it still in the hopper, moving forward.
And I appreciate the fact that it's a lease and not getting rid of the land. I know that as we look forward to other projects, that's going to keep coming up.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to number three.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision application and plat for Owl's Landing Block C, being every plat of Lot forty-one thirty-four within Owl's Landing Block B with conditions.
Okay, and we got Sam digging through this one.
This is the third and last plat for Owl's Landing, which is the subdivision on Brookfield Road. There's a total of eighty-six lots. This would be the last thirty-nine lot plat that would allow those lots to be sold and developed adjacent to the community park. So this is not something we haven't seen before, but it's a, it's a step that's required in order for the plat to be recorded so the lots can be divided and sold officially.
And this final plat is fully consistent with the preliminary plat.
It is.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, councilors?
So this is the last thing we're going to see of Owl's Landing, is that correct?
Unless there's any changes. Unless there's any changes.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll see.
Okay.
I don't expect there to be any, but yeah.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll move to number four.
An ordinance repealing Oxford Codified Ordinance Chapter 1139 entitled Variances and adopting new Oxford Codified Ordinance Chapter 1139 entitled Variances for the purpose of extending the time that an approved zoning variance is valid.
Hey, Sam?
This was a staff-initiated text change that we recommended and actually brought to plenty of commission's attention several months ago. As you know, we have several different deadlines throughout the code depending on what type of development that it is or approval. They range from six months up to two years. And six months is a little bit short for some of the projects now in today's construction sequencing world. Oftentimes, they haven't been able to get their building permit before the six months expire. So we're just following through to ask for it to be extended to one year.
Okay, seems reasonable. Anyone from the public like to address this one? Okay, thank you. Counselors, any comments or questions? All right, moving right along. Read the next one.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Oxford, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024.
Okay, Heidi, welcome.
Good evening, councilors. I just wanted to-
We've got a couple on here.
I do. I just wanted to tell you all, the, the three of you that have election stuff going on tonight, we love your results this evening. This ordinance is, as presented at the October 18th work session with, with council, this ordinance adopts the appropriations presented and discussed, and incorporates the additional funding that we had discussed for, for the red up and the amount of five thousand dollars through the funding and the additional two thousand for the tops. As you will hear in the second reading of the supplemental appropriation ordinance tonight, the other change from that meeting was the capital equipment fund has a reduction of ninety-five thousand six hundred and thirty dollars as the place being funded for the, for the cruisers that you just approved by resolution. We've included that amount with the supplemental and it reduced the expense in the 2024 budget. The total, there, there was a discrepancy in the number. The original number that I was given was for the purchase of hybrid vehicles. Then we found out later, everything was already said to Heather, so we are gonna make do with it the way we have it because it was a lesser amount. The total appropriations, including transfers for 2024 budget is sixty-seven million six hundred and five thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who wants to address this? Okay, councilor, you have questions?
So why, no one else has? So, and just so I understand, what we're looking at here is kind of the high-level view of the major accounts. And, and so it basically incorporates detailed line item stuff from the budgets?
Yes.
So it's kind of implied that all the stuff that, that we discussed at those, the capital and the operating budgets are basically here?
Yes. What was presented to you is broken down in this ordinance by operations.
Okay, great. And then the second question, really the only changes are in those two things that we discussed from the tops and the, the stuff that is down at the bottom.
And the reduction from the capital equipment fund.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. So, and this is less about, you, Heidi, what, for those of you, you know, this place, the process, it's gonna go relatively quickly. For those of you guys who are out in the public, and this to me is counter, like how does the budgeting happen? Because it's one of the most core functions, how does our money get spent? And it's hard to, it's, it's, it's really complicated. So in our, our system, the city manager presents the budget, we have the responsibility to approve it. But, you know, all the work that staff went into presenting stuff, putting the budget together, taking the requests from departments, kind of reconciling the budget, balancing the budget. So we're at the end of the process. So I really wanna thank staff and, you know, finance, city manager, all the, the people who put in requests and had some stuff approved and had some stuff not approved. So that's how that sausage gets made. But I do wanna say as somebody, when I first got elected, I said, okay, like, how does the budget get made? And, and six years in, I'm trying to still figure out. And I, and I see the, the staff part of it, but what I've always asked the whole time through is like, well, what role do we as councilors have in shaping the budget? Because it's such a huge responsibility, how the money gets spent. To what degree is it democratic, you know? And so what, if you're in the public, you know, one of the major ways we do it is with this January, we have, we have one meeting in January, and we do the discussion of the priorities and how many stickers did we get, Jessica? Five or seven stickers? We got to vote with that. So that was really, really important, and I think we can see some of those things reflected here. But I, I would say that just, but, but that's, that was five priorities, but there are also a lot of line items. So this year was like a lot of years, I'm like, I'm gonna see, can I have impact on the budget? So I asked the question, can we have a work session to discuss, for example, capital projects or whatever that we might wanna prioritize? And we didn't do that, but then the city manager said, well, I'll take, you know, requests. And so I did submit one, and I shared it by email, and you guys have seen it printed out twice, some capital budget requests and also some operational budget requests in about a minute. I'm kind of, okay, so is this gonna, that's gonna show up in the budget? And we went through the meeting, and then I waited to see, and was it in the budget? I didn't see the budget change. At the end of the meeting, well, what about these items? And no, I mean, I had to kind of remind, like, okay, well, what about, so one of the items in the capital budget was, we know the trail's gonna cross at 732 Dana Drive. Can we budget for improvements there? Except for the safe house to school, or, or some of the other things that I, for example, like school crossing guard or increasing our tree canopy. Same thing with the operational budget. I waited to see whether those things were in there. They weren't in the budget. Were they gonna be mentioned? No. Hey, I raised my hand, like, what about these things over here? And, and the budget still doesn't reflect those changes. And, and so, and it's fine, you know, because just, maybe they're just David, but they're just things. But to me, I'm, I'm still wondering, like, well, if I'm an elected official, I, I can't really adjust the budget through the process. And also, we don't really seem to have a direct way for people to participate. I mean, people have made requests, and I'm so happy to see three of them there. If you notice, send an email, you can get something. I guess my point is, is like, I still think the budget process, if it's truly, if council's responsibility is to, to see it through, I'd like to think that democracy through our representatives could impact the budget or the people directly. If they say, what about a cold shelter? Can we get it in there? That we have a process for getting it there. So I'm hoping, I'm gonna, in year seven of being on council, I'm gonna hope the budget's a bit more democratic next year and then pull out my, my fingers. But in the meantime, what I'm gonna do is, just as a heads up to see this stuff through, I'm going to make some, I'm going to make some motions to amend the budget in our second reading to cover the items that we discussed that I proposed before.
I, I'm confused. I understood everything you said, and, and this has been an ongoing discussion, but does that relate to this particular ordinance, or are you relating it to the budget in general?
Well, I mean, if this is, are, are we gonna have separate budget things, or is this?
This is appropriations.
This is our appropriations.
Okay.
This is our appropriations for next year.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanna add items in, we would have to adjust whatever program it is. We don't budget by line items, although we provide that information to you. But for example, if you wanna add something in community environment in the general fund, then we would have to add that. But, you know, when we put this budget together, our focus is on a balanced budget. And some of the items that we discussed that you brought up, for example, the crossing at 732, what you're suggesting, I believe, we didn't feel it was feasible, but we're gonna look at some other options at that intersection, you know, when the trail comes forward. You know, we're somewhat flexible, but we have to live within our means. And the, you know, I can't remember your list off the top of my head, but you had some information in there about the tree canopy. Well, we felt that the amount we had in there was adequate to address that, but it's a challenge. Because as you know, we went over the fire fund tonight, and, you know, we have a lot of requests for, for funding. But council is the deciding body. I mean, even if we pass this tonight, we do supplementals during the year. If you pass a resolution directing us to do a project, then we'll have to fund it, so.
So, you know, I mean, I can understand, it's just, well, I understand, this is the budget process. So in the second reading of this, if we wanted to amend the budget to include additional funding for something, that misses the mark. So, and that's, and that's basically what I'm saying. Last year, you asked that we, for example, do a resolutions about the lock, the resolution together. I think we do have a process, and I'm going to make some motions, again, just to remind us of the list, that there was, you know, I proposed that we budget for a, a capital improvement to improve the intersection at 732 in Dana Drive. I'm not saying it has to be a hybrid beacon, but I think we should budget for it so we can engineer. I, I think if we are serious about climate action, we 're gonna fill the goal, I think, increasing our tree canopy to a tune of an additional sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty dollars is not an exorbitant amount, and five thousand dollars for a crossing guard. So those are just some of the things that I'm, and again, if there's no support or second, then the budget won't be amended. I guess what I'm just saying is that I have, I'm trying to figure out the process and when, you know, if doing this before the balanced budget is balanced, so that something could be woven in. So then I propose that there's no, because the budget's already balanced. So again, I'm gonna make those motions.
So you're gonna work on those.
Well, I've already shared that stuff. You guys know what those things are, what the justice-
Well, you're gonna make amendments.
Yeah, I will make, I will make a motion to amend the budget in the second meeting.
Yeah, you might wanna share those with council.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah. And, and you have- What's that? I'm sorry? And staff, so they can repair it. Well, and you guys see, have seen what my requests are.
Maybe it'd be simpler if you presented resolutions to do these projects and see if that passes. You know, I don't know if the rest of the council supports it, the estimated cost, and then we'll put it in the budget as a supplemental.
Yeah, we could do that.
You know, because if we change these numbers at the last minute, you know, that never seems to work out well.
I, I don't wanna lose my patience, but I submitted these numbers in June when we were invited to do so. So I'm not amending the budget at the last moment. I tried to use the process as I understood it to be open to us.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, it's in part about these things, and it's in part about a process that as a counselor, I'm unable to amend the budget and ask to approve.
You can, you can propose any amendment.
I know, but I'm, I'm just expressing my hope that in the future, the budget can be more open to input from elected officials.
Can I, can I, I do wanna address the five thousand dollars. We did, we did discuss at the budget work session, the five thousand dollar share as a donation to collaborate with Helen and School District and Oxford Community Foundation. And that small amount, we had anticipated just kind of absorbing.
Right.
Once we have that collaboration between, because we don't have that yet. So for more concrete numbers, we, we kind of, that's something that we could absorb even with our contingency line within the budget.
Great. And I will, I will share the justification again. I sent it by email in June, and you have paper copies twice. I will send it at work time, and it basically is seventy-five thousand dollars in the capital budget for the intersection improvement of the trail and sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty for tree canopy.
Can that be, can the Dana Drive project that you're talking about be absorbed within the Oaks Trail budget for most of the grant funding?
I mean, we're spending-
Depends on what we're planning to do. I don't think we can answer that.
We're working on, we're working on the design.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm saying is we, we budgeted almost half a million dollars for the roof of the covered ridge. I would think a safety improvement for seventy-five thousand dollars could also heighten that if we do budget. So I mean, I don't wanna take up any more of the time, but in part it's about these items, but partly I just want to express my hope that there's a different way that we do this in my seventh year as a council trying to mention this process differently.
I just wanted to verify my statement. I wasn't suggesting you were amelting the budget. I was suggesting that the best way this could happen is probably that when these are first brought up, preemptively staff works to bring us different options for those budgets, so it's already built in. Or if it's so small, it's supplemental and can be worked in, then that's not a problem.
And in Georgia, I mean, there's, you've probably heard of the term participatory budgeting, and lots of cities do it, and it's a way that you can invoke public opinion much earlier in the process than out of the year. And so that would mean city council members are in different parts of the city, coffee shops, restaurants, wherever, so they have different times of day. So people can come and attend and tell us, how would you break up this piece of pie so that it can be integrated? So it is, hopefully, I mean, I mean, we should. I think we should probably talk about involving that in the process.
Well, and we discussed the community assistance. And David, I like your idea of the council deciding how we spend this hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We've always given it to the same agencies. So, you know, I'm all for that. So let's move forward with that. That's a lot of money. And council gives, you know, their decision on that. So, you know, it's-
Well, hopefully, we're not competing charities against each other, but there's enough room to support us.
You know, it's, we, I don't think you see the, I mean, I turned down a lot of requests from department heads because we have to provide a balanced budget. You know, they want additional staff, additional equipment, and, you know, so we're, we're doing that to make sure our budget is balanced and, you know.
Okay. So if anybody has an amendment, the next meeting would be difficult to attend. Thank you. Dave, can you move to ordinance number six?
An ordinance outlining budgeted advances for the City of Oxford, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024.
Okay, Heidi?
Me again. Also, as presented at the October 18th session, this ordinance adopts the advances presented and discussed. The advances total three million nine hundred and five thousand dollars. This is a zero net effect. As the advances are used to fund projects as needed throughout the year, and then returned back to the general fund once the equipment revenue is received in the budget.
Okay. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to address this one? Okay, are you ready? Any councilor to address it? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to number seven. Oh, there's more. See, you waited for the last meeting.
An ordinance outlining budgeted transfers for the City of Oxford, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024.
Okay, Heidi, budgeted transfer.
Yes. Again, as presented at the Oxford 18, the October 18th work session, this ordinance adopts the transfers presented and discussed. The total of the, the total transfers are four million eight hundred and thirty-two thousand and eleven dollars. Transfers between funds include operating support, capital projects, funding, debt service payments, and this year, the addition of the three new full-time firefighters.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this one? Yeah, one up front.
John, I'm not gonna get you to go out of drive. This is tangential. I'm speaking on behalf of the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, and that the, the board would like to be involved with design work that's related to root paving projects. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this ordinance? Counselors? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to number eight.
An ordinance to adopt fees and charges for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, nice, short title.
Hi, good evening.
This is your last one.
It's not, actually.
Oh, there's one, well, second reading.
Right.
I'm talking about first.
This is the last first reading, yes. This fee ordinance establishes fees charged for fiscal year 2024. As discussed at the work session, the fee for electric charging stations has been removed.
Thank you.
The parking garage and Lot 52 have been split to a lower rate, to fifty cents per hour, to be charged in the parking garage. The ordinance presented at the work session also included a new fee for 2024 for the annual food truck inspection. We have renewed that prior to presenting that ordinance tonight, just that we're very good.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay, councilors?
Yeah, so we saw some change there, which I really do appreciate the responsiveness there. And I guess I just wanted to follow up with Mr. Perry, because in the absence of our ability to do much to support electrification in code, so, you know, we were talking about potential waiving fees, you said it wouldn't be good to do in this, in this fee ordinance because of the contracts we have with how we process the money. So how soon could we, for example, if we wanted to waive fees for, you know, net zero transition things like electric vehicle charging, solar panels, how fast could we effectuate that so we could in the year, some subsequent year, take these out of the ordinance?
The next time we do a contract renewal with a building official, or if we seek a new building official, either one of those, we, we did not do that this year. We possibly made- We possibly may do it in two thousand twenty-four. I don't, I don't think it's necessary to incentivize it for things like solar panels because of just the, the size of the project. For smaller projects where there are more homeowner-based, there may be incentive there for waiving a fee may be useful. But yes, it would be through the contract process would be my recommendation, like we discussed at the work session.
So when that opportunity comes up, if we could talk about that, whether we want to do it or not, we didn't really necessarily get consensus, but given how few tools we have locally, to be able to waive the fees with something. And so I hope when we have an opportunity of decision point, I hope it comes back to us so we can decide whether that's something we want to do.
Yeah, but anytime we do a contract with a third party, that would come before this body, so you would have an opportunity then. If, if staff hasn't built it in to ask about it.
Right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much. Yeah, I think that pretty well shared consensus from our work session. All right. No further discussion? All right. Move to number nine.
An ordinance establishing salaries and certain benefits for salaried and hourly full-time and part-time employees within the service of the city of Oxford, Ohio, paid from January one, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. Hi, Jessica.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you. Every once in a while, we do a really deep dive on pretty routine ordinance, and this is one of those years. So we conducted a statewide analysis of our wages and we reviewed cities in Butler County, other college town, and ten other cities of similar population and revenue as the city of Oxford. And with that, we really did a deep dive to see are our wages comparable, probably competitive, to make sure that we are in range with our peers and enabling us to attract employees and retain employees. So with that, we found a few things that we'd like to recommend. The first being that we'd like all of our staff to be above sixty percent area median income in our county. Sixty percent of area median income in Butler County is forty-two thousand four hundred and eighty. So all the positions that are impacted are attached to Exhibit A. I'm not going to go through them line by line, but I'm going to take them kind of the broad categories. And if you have questions, please, please let me know.
We'll start on page two twenty-five.
Yes, yes.
It's a big package.
It is. So there are a few physicians who would move up above that area median income. The second is to address wage disparities between us and the state. And there are a few areas in which we have some discrepancies. One is in our streets division with the service worker three. We have some disparities in our service and engineering with our engineer and our engineering technician, where the physician's there. We also found that we had some internal disparities. The last time we gave a merit increase was two thousand and four. And so we give cost of living adjustments, which we talk about a lot, right? And we kind of just do flat cost of living adjustments. But what that means is if you have a position A and position A someone else, and they start just thirty cents apart for whatever reason, then over time, their pays grow apart with compounding interest. And we have quite a few positions that need to be addressed. So our recommendation is that if you have the same position, the same classification, you have the same pay. And then what we do is we then honor your institutional knowledge and longevity through the longevity pay. So that is a difference that we've been, that is a recommendation of the change, the way we've been doing things. We have a couple of positions where we did an analysis of their job descriptions versus the jobs, the duties that they're performing. And we're recommending a change in our streets operations specialist and our admin three to become an office manager. And then we have a series of title changes, trying to bring alignment, kind of get these positions to be aligned with their classification. So a few of those would be in parks and recreation would be, instead of having like aquatics and programs supervisor and sports supervisor, we'd have a recreation supervisor. And instead of aquatics and programs coordinator and sports coordinator, we'd have a recreation coordinator. Streets division, we have changed it from parks maintenance supervisor to grounds maintenance supervisor, going to take care of the cemetery and parks. Water distribution, we had a lot of disparities in the role of service workers. So what we decided to do is that if you have a certification, that will be your job title. So for example, staff working in water distribution with a class one O E P certification will become a water distribution operator one. With a class two, you'd be the operator two, et cetera, et cetera. We are recommending, one, excuse me, a full-time position in the city manager's office in the area of H R and communications. This is for succession planning. The person, person who does H R in our office has been there very many years and could retire in a few years. And so we, we're trying to get ready to have a succession plan. We have the three new firefighters recommended. And then in police, we had a new officer hired in twenty-three, but we didn't come back and amend this ordinance. So this just fills that position that is funded through the Ohio violent crime reduction grant program. Then in section three, under pay bans, this is kind of what we talked about with bringing people in the same classification, the same pay, but it clarifies our new procedure. In the past, we've had this market midpoint and you had a range and you could hire within that range. But what we're recommending now is if you have an equivalent experience and certification of an existing position, you will come in at that same pay as, as the other person. If you do not have that equivalent experience or experience, you'll start a little lower, but you will be given a pathway that you could increase your pay over three years to become equivalent, because that pathway didn't exist before. If there's no equivalent position when a new person is hired, we'll use a market study based on comparable municipalities. Under section four, under part-time employees, oh, sorry, excuse me, also under pay bans, oh, that's a big one. We are recommending a four percent cost of living increase for everyone in pay bans one through seven who's full-time. In section four, part-time employees, what we did for our interns and our firefighters, we used to have like a certain number of interns we could have and a certain number of firefighters we could have, but they worked so many different types of hours, it was really hard to be like, well, there's thirty or thirty-four or there's five or seven. So instead, we're recommending a cap of hours for these positions. So whether a person works two or twelve hours a week or twenty or thirty hours a week, just as long as they don't cap those hours in a year. We have some new recommended part-time positions. We have a new part-time, we recommend a new part-time code enforcement officer. This is grant-funded to the tobacco retail program. We would like to have a planning co-op student through, through the local university. And then under, we also increased the minimum wage on our part-time employees. And at the top level, we increased by four percent, gives us a, a range to work in. And then under employee benefits, we have updated the longevity payments for the first time since nineteen ninety-eight. We took the nineteen ninety-eight value, applied a calculator, and got us close to that equivalent for longevity for people who have had long years of service at the city of Oxford. And then a couple of other things were just like some clerical cleanup issues that we do, we do each year. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wow.
It was, it was, I mean, this is a years-long process.
Yeah, so who's behind this? Because like, tell me about all the, people who worked so hard to do this.
So a special thank you to Matt Arbuckles, Senior Catchdown Class, who helped us do the wage analysis. And they all learned how to be public records request and they all learned how to use Excel. And then I then took that information and, you know, did a deeper dive with the data. We opened personnel files to see if these disparities were warranted based on performance, things like that. I worked with all the department heads, get their feedback and, you know, I also said like, tell me if I'm going to step in it, you know? And so we really tried to look both regionally and also with comparable cities statewide to see, and see what we do. But it's about, I mean, to be honest, this is a, a pubic process in the future.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to, to proactively do something like this, you know, it's easy not to do. But to do the research and do it so thoughtfully and the commitment behind it to a livable wage. I know that Council Ragoo came on and looking at how much we were paid for some seasonal workers, like, we could, our, our wage bands have to reflect our values, you know? And so I'm really proud that we're making this commitment. There are budgetary implications to this, which, you know, encompassing of, of the stress that city manager is under, but it's doing the right thing. And, but it's not just like out of the goodness of our hearts. If we want to compete for high-quality employees, we need to be competitive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, let's move to second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-six ninety-seven, supplemental budget ordinance number seven, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Certainly.
Certainly.
It's been moved in seconded. Seeing you are mad.
I am mad. Uh, there are two changes included with the supplemental ordinance for second reading. The inclusion of the police cruisers, which passed by resolution earlier, we've already discussed. I've also included an additional fifty thousand dollars needed to fund the fire division salary and benefits lines. The fire division has lost three staff members this year due to resignations, which resulted in thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars in payouts. Uh, that takes away from the, you know, salaries and wages for the remainder of the year. The overtime of the fire department due to those resignations has increased significantly to allow for coverage of, of each of those shifts. And the overtime budget for two thousand twenty-three has already been exceeded with two months of payroll up in the year.
Would it be fair to say that there's a crisis that the city's facing in the fire department? You don't have to answer that. All right. Is there anyone in the, in the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay. Thank you, Heidi. Counselors? All right. All the way.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Perthert?
Yep.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snibley?
Yes. Believe it or not, we are filing two announcements and communications. That was a big agenda.
I guess it was.
And I will begin with City Manager Elliot.
I just have a couple of items for City Council. I don't want the residents to know that, as we know, BQ Energy was bought by Clean Capital last year and operated under the previous name during the integration with Clean Capital. There were no staff changes on the Oxford project. Clean Capital has been completing the permitting process. The most recent permit applied for is the Ohio EPA five-one-three permit. This permit requires that a letter of intent for the proposed solar facility project be sent to the Board of Public Health, Butler County Board of Health, the city, Oxford Township trustees, Butler County commissioners, city planning commission, city fire EMS division, and the Butler County solid waste district. So this is all required under the statute. And of course, three of those entities are, are the city. So we were required to be notified. And so the letter has been mailed and received by all entities. The proposed facility is for a one point seven five megawatt A C solar energy facility on the city's closed sanitary landfill. Other permits submitted and approved include the state and local endangered species, state historic preservation, and the F A A permit. Besides the Ohio EPA five thirteen permit, other permits to be submitted include the N P D E S permit, which is done right before construction, and the solar panel construction permit with the city. So although Clean Capital is planning to construct a one point seven five megawatt A C solar energy facility due to interconnection costs with Duke Energy, adding tracking devices will enable the solar farm to produce more electric energy kilowatt-hours. A one point seven five megawatt project with trackers will not occupy all of the site. Also, Clean Capital is agreeable to expanding the project if the city can get a grant for the point of interconnection with Duke Energy, which is required upgrades. One possible grant is the Grid Resilience Innovative Partnership, GRIP, which is part of the bipartisan infrastructure law. Staff has obtained information on this grant opportunity. And if we're able to secure the grant, Clean Capital will simply send in a revised application and get an updated approval.
That's great.
Yeah. The last thing that I wanted to share with City Council, as you all know, letters went out for the opt-out for our electric aggregation program. We, we received quite a few phone calls in the city hall, a lot of questions. And as you know, in our last agreement, the price was four point seven one cents per kilowatt hour. And the new agreement is a seven point one seven cents per kilowatt hour. Prices have gone up. And if a person chooses to opt-out, they need to let Energy Harbor know by November thirteenth. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. And the price to compare for Duke Energy was nine?
The price to compare, I think I have that written here. I don't remember off the top of my head. It's nine point nine four cents per kilowatt hour. And that was as of July two thousand twenty-three. That changes each month. So those opt-out letters will be mailed beginning with October twenty-third.
Right. And if people want the aggregation, they don't need to do anything?
That is correct. If you received a letter, you don't need to do anything. But if you have picked your own energy supplier, you would not get a letter. And if you wanted to be included, you would need to contact your supplier and terminate that contract and then opt-in, so.
All right. Thank you. Mike? Nothing tonight? Chief? Nothing, Mike? Heidi?
I'll make this quick, I promise. Uh, I just wanted to, like, the public know, as well as councilors, we have promoted Stephanie Gray as our Assistant Finance Director. Stephanie has been a key member of our finance team since two thousand fifteen in the role of Finance Specialist. Stephanie is a valued employee in the city of Oxford and has been a huge asset in assisting me through the chaos over the last several months. I'm excited to see Stephanie excel in her new role as the Assistant Finance Director. Uh, we are currently reviewing applications to fill a vacated position of Finance Specialist and look forward to returning to post-staff, if they're received. We also have, if you see a new young face in our office, we have hired a part-time intern. His name is Dean Craddock. Dean is a senior at Talladega and has been a refreshing addition to our department. Dean has caught on very quickly, is very well-rounded, intelligent young man, and we are happy to have him join us.
Superb. Thank you very much. Chief DeFrich?
Yes, sir. DeFrich.
Casey? Come on down. Welcome, Casey.
Thank you. Good evening. I figured I better come up and talk because I heard if I don't, I get a hard time from some other department heads, so. They who didn't talk tonight, so here I am. First, I just want to give a reminder that Veterans Day is this Saturday. The city's hosting its annual ceremony in the Uptown Parks at eleven o'clock. I know it is Saturday, but if you can be there, we would love to have you. We'll have a full lineup of both kids and Talladega students. And of course, the mayor will be there and some other local speakers and local veterans. So if you can be there, that'd be great. I want to thank Council Ragoo for our second annual and very fun pumpkin catapult event we had on Friday night. We had over a hundred and sixty people launch a pumpkin on Friday, which was up from seventy-something our first year. So a lot of fun, had a great time.
It was a thousand pounds of pumpkins.
A thousand pounds of pumpkins and a couple of watermelons mixed in there.
We're going to need a second catapult?
We're already talking about it. I'm actually meeting the catapult creator on Friday, who may be also known as Bill Green, to talk about options for next year. So, and the last thing is Holiday Fest coming up, just kind of save the date to December second. Couple of minor changes this year, but for the most part, everything will, will look like it always has.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. We appreciate you.
I'm delighted to report that we have finally received something from the owner of the vacant bookstore. And H A P C will be reviewing it tomorrow night. It's not a design for a new building, but it is a first step for an architectural review. So as long as we have quorum tomorrow night, we'll be moving that along.
All right. Thank you very much. That's good news. Any movement is good news.
Just a few updates this evening. One, for those of you who are watching online, we have a new A V equipment and we apologize for our lack of live stream for the first part of the meeting. So we do have a backup upstairs and so we'll post the full meeting online tomorrow morning. And then it started working halfway through. And we don't know why, but we'll look into it and we'll get it fixed. So, um, Head, we'll just, I just want you to know that we're aware of it and we'll get it fixed. I also want to just kind of give you a brief clarification. You know, we had, we'd also received a letter about the coal shelter and we did reach out to our local service servers, excuse me, social service providers. And I said, one, can you do this? And two, what would it take for you to do this? And I'm waiting to hear back from them. So I have invited them both to kind of let us know what it would be, what it would look like. And then I hope to come back to you with some ideas in the near future. Just, we know that in the budget, we did put in a little bit of. Just, we know that in the budget, we did put in a little bit of money for thread up and then tops, but these are going to be ARPA, so I will come back to you with ARPA-specific resolutions, because each American Rescue Plan expenditure needs to have like a tie resolution to it. So if you're like, why are we doing this again? That's why. And then a brief clarification on Chestnut Street. We do have an open request for proposals for developers to help develop on that land. It is restricted to be eighty percent area median income, but other than that, it's really open. So if a developer wants to use, you know, housing waste vouchers or things like that, we can, but if they want to keep it just like, well, you're in this income qualification pool, that's also allowed. And so we, as the city and the committee of Housing Advisory Committee and the councillors, will review the RFPs, and we can select someone, or we can't, or we can choose not to. So I think we have some options there.
And if there's a subdivision built into that, then that has to go through.
Oh, it has to go through the entire planning and.
Plenty of time to argue about that.
Yes, so it wouldn't just happen. Thank you. That's a very important clarification. And then finally, a bit of fun, one of the council's goals was to improve creative place-making, and so in addition to all the things that Casey mentioned, we will also be having on November eighteenth, the first annual farm and fleet, so we hope to join us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jessica. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, Glenn? Nothing, thanks. Okay, Alex?
Just a couple things. We saw good luck to those who are up for election tonight as well. And then I also wanted to take a moment to thank everybody who was involved with our very first year of cemetery tours. As was mentioned very early in the meeting, the city of Oxford now owns Oxford Cemetery, and this year we were able to conduct three eleven a.m. historic walking tours of Oxford Cemetery, where we highlighted fifteen folks, or kind of sections that were in, that are in our cemetery. We talked about people who received medals of honor in war, we talked about artists, we talked about one resident who was lost on an expedition to the Amazon, which I don't think you would ever know unless you had attended one of our tours or are watching this meeting. So I just, this was not something that I did alone. A massive, massive thank you to Emily Hicks and Brad Spurlock at Smith Library, who did a lion's share of the research. Again, thank you to Brad, and then also thank you to Steve Gordon at the McGuffey Housing Museum, who all co-led tours with me. We really looked out on weather the first two, the last one was a little bit drizzly, but I think we persevered. And then also thank you to the city. I know this was a bit of a bumpy ride, so thank you to Doug, and to Heidi, and to Jessica, and to Casey, everybody who helps me learn a lot of lessons about how to market a cemetery tour. Those have all been taken very much to heart. We did feedback surveys, because I'm a nerd, and people really liked them, and so I'm looking forward to proposing a new docket of tours for next October. So thank you all so much, if you were here or not here and were involved, just a massive thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Good job.
I wanted to thank, and I'm sorry if I didn't get your names right, I want to thank Kathy and Gary, for coming tight as you left it, because your comments were very different from some other comments that people have said about affordable housing. They were thoughtful, they were compassionate, and they invoked a sense of compromise, and I really, really appreciate that. I would like to put my money where my mouth is, and I bought a house across from PVA, because if I'm gonna ask anybody else to do it, I'm gonna do it. And it's fine, it's not as scary as you think. The PVA is horribly run, and it is worse for, not for us, but for the people who live there, for the, you know, the kids that live there that have to see the crap that goes on that is unmonitored. So I was fortunate enough to be a part of a cohort of sixteen elected officials from around the country that worked throughout the nine months trying to figure out how to start a for, or bolster affordable housing, not start, y'all have done that, affordable housing programs in our respective towns. And I was fortunate enough to, and please Google this place, fortunate enough to meet in Chicago and tour, it is the Lucy Gonzalez Parsons Apartments in Chicago, developed by Biker Dyke Redevelopment Corporation. It's amazing, like Peggy said, they are, they focus on sustainability, they focus on, it is so attractive, like, anyone would want to live there. So please look at those, I have photos, and we're all like, man, I wish I could stay here. It's open in section eight, and that brings us to the other point about source of income discrimination, which is something that is not preempted in Ohio. There are either compilation of eleven different ordinances from towns around Ohio, ranging from Cleveland and Columbus and Cincinnati, or even Wickliff, Ohio, which is twelve thousand people, where basically your, the landlord can still say, no, you're dangerous and scary, I do not want you to live in my apartment, right, because you did not pass the background check. But what if that family who is struggling and has section eight vouchers could stay somewhere else? You know, they're amazing people, you know that, right? But what if we incentivize landlords throughout the town to allow those families the dignity to not live at PVA? So I really, I look forward to working on source of income. They're not going to preempt us, so I know that we have a law on our side. And it also addresses the concept of decentralizing poverty. So please look it up, it is, I'll say it again. Yes, thank you. Lucy Gonzalez Parsons Apartments in Chicago, they are beautiful, and I'd be happy to share the ordinances that I have compiled together for source of income discrimination, and also I have any photos, because I echo your concern. I want them to be with dignity and attractive and blend into the neighborhood. That's the hope.
Good. Amber?
Yes, I echo what Chantel said. I heard the word fear, but I don't know that I, that it's fear of people, but fear of poor management, low-quality housing, when we talked about the residents being fearful. And I think we all hold the value that we'd like these, this housing to be as high-quality as possible. I want to just thank everyone who ran for office, whatever the position, win or lose, it takes something to run for public office, and I want to thank everyone who put themselves in the race to do that. There is a living room conversation this Friday at the Interfaith Center at New, it's an opportunity for community members to get together and to sit for an hour or more and talk, and this Friday's topic is on marijuana. I don't know what's happening with issue two right now, whether it goes up or down, I think it would be a worthwhile conversation. So if you're interested, or you know people who are interested, lunch is provided at the Interfaith Center. And then finally, I do want to say something. You know, my father was city staff from the city of Toronto. He retired as one of the directors of building inspections. He's been retired for a while now, but I know that when you're involved in building inspections, housing, there's a lot of suspicion about what you're doing or why you're doing it. And so I have a soft spot for staff, because my father was city staff, and so I know some of what he had to put up with. I do want to clarify that sometimes when staff doesn't have all the answers, it's not the same thing as staff being secretive or duplicitous. They can provide answers when there are clear answers, and when there are not clear answers, it's sometimes better not to put anything out there than to put false information out there. But I think it's really important for us as city leaders, when we're communicating with the public, that we give staff the benefit of the doubt, and encourage people to come to council and to speak to us, as you did, and I thank you for that, but that how we frame what we know about what's going on is really important. And so I think that this is an early stage for the process with the property of Chestnut Street, and I know that staff has the best of intentions and are open to sharing information as they habit, and as was stated earlier, everything has to go through a very public process. And I want to thank you for coming tonight.
So open, Sam, nothing to add to me?
So a few real quick things. Well, thank you to Mayor Stanley, it was a really long agenda, you kept moving through it quickly. I wanted to particularly thank and commend Heidi Hill, because at the end of this budget process, this has really been a very complicated year for everyone, but for you to step into the role and see it through the process, I'm frustrated about the nature of the engagement, but not in the budgeting. I wanted to touch on the idea of what we do there on Chestnut Street. I haven't downloaded the RFP to see what the criteria are, but I know that in many of these kind of projects, there's a spec for some kind of community engagement built into it, not just in the approval, but some kind of board that then engages the surrounding residents. And to the degree that we're tuned into that, as, whether we ask for it or not, I think that'd be really important. So, you know, if we just had some kind of structure, so if there was an issue in your adjacent property, you could know who to talk to, would be really nice. And then the final thing is, again, that the city of Oxford, with the leading voters, has organized an electrification and efficiency fair, November fifteenth, six-thirty to eight at Kramer Elementary School. Again, many of us are thinking, we worry about the climate, we want to know what we can do. We've heard this thing called the Inflation Reduction Act, but we're not sure how it works, because it's kind of confusing. So what that meeting is going to be is basically six-thirty to six-forty-five, some really quick presentations on climate action, what you can do in the Inflation Reduction Act, but more interestingly, it's going to be a fair to just interact with vendors. So we have two EV vendors, and you can go and sit in an EV and fire it up and wonder where the sound is, but there is none. HVAC, we have three H, local HVAC companies can talk to you about heat pumps and geothermal, you know, inductions, dose, and then we also have two solar companies, Prolightning Solar, which many of us are familiar with, CoCothing is also another one. So what we're hoping is people make a plan for like, how can I, the Inflation Reduction Act is money on the table, and if you don't do anything in a year, it's just another year's money you're leaving on the table. So if you have a goal to make your household more efficient and carbon neutral, come out on the fifteenth at Kramer Elementary School. Thank you.
Superb. Thank you for your work on that. That's really important, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity. I hope people take advantage of it. Today is Election Day. I want to thank everybody in our community who went out and voted today. It's your civic duty, they say, but it really respects the veterans who have, were about to honor, who have fought and died for our right to vote. And to blow it off is to disrespect those who have given the ultimate sacrifice to our country. So however you voted, and for whomever and whatever you voted for, I thank you, those who have done that, and we will find out what the results are sometime later tonight, I'm sure. I think you got a lot of discussion going, and so I want to thank you, along with my colleagues, for coming forward. Because of public comments, it's comments, but we do obviously listen, and we appreciate you coming forward. There will be plenty more opportunities for all of us to learn about the options that will come before us and that we can decide on. So I thank you. I thank everybody who came tonight, even students who didn't really want to, but, yeah.
And they stayed to the end, yeah.
Hey, but you stayed to the end, we appreciate you very much. And in order to honor you, I call for an adjournment of this meeting. It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Both stay here. Yes. It's just. Thanks.